I expect ours will be very similar.
Yeah.
I kind of.
I was about to say, we need to get Danielle.
Does he realize we're late?
Yeah, I think so. Jason should be here in five minutes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the COVID probably caught up with me for three years.
We had another friend that never had it. All right, we'll call the meeting order. Do you call the roll, please?
No.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Would you let the record show that Jason has just arrived?
Ha.
Jason is here. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our consent docket, item A, is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 17th, 2023. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held May 9th, 2023. Accept two variable wide or width utility easements from Moore to Come LLC for water and sewer improvements to serve 825 Northwest 24th Street. Accept a 10-foot sanitary sewer easement from the Quire Moore Partners LP for an existing sewer line at 1100 North Moore Avenue. Approve moving expenses in the amount of $7,180.44 for relocation of Telus and Cabinet Company, Inc., a displaced business currently located at 137 Southeast 4th Street for construction and maintenance of the Southeast 4th Street Railroad Underpass Project. Item F is approve the Turner Avenue Widening and Reconstruction Project as constructed by SAC Services, Inc. for the final amount of $1,065,428.63 and implement the two-year maintenance bond effective July 1st, 2023. Approve professional services agreement with Garber LLC for on-demand engineering design services. And item H is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $2,410,299.37 and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $3,063,672.50. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Do you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item three. Consider adoption of Resolution Number 5823 authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the city of Moore, Oklahoma for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the question of issuance of general obligation bonds of said city in the amount not to exceed the sum of $49,390,000 to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, improving, or repairing streets or bridges in said city with all of said improvements to be owned exclusively by said city and levying and collecting an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon the taxable property in said city for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the street projects, the arterial street projects that have been discussed with council several times and then also a public meeting was held one night last month to discuss these projects. Again, the pledge from the city is to stay within the milage rate of 16 and 1/2 mils, not to go above that. This item and items four and five are all companion items. Recommend approval.
When is this planning to come up for a launch?
November 14th.
November, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item four is consider authorizing the execution of special election proclamation and notice pertaining to the proposed general obligation bond issuing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item five is consider adoption and employment agreements with Chris Gander of BOK Financial Securities, Inc. as financial advisor and Terrell Hawkins of Phillips Murray, P.C. as bond counsel in regard to the proposed general obligation bond issue. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item six would be considered the final plat of Flicker Ridge Edition located in the southeast quarter of Section 11, Township 10 North, Rule 3 West being north of Northeast 12th Street and west of Flicker Ridge Road. Applicant by Mongold Properties LLC, the planning commission recommended approval, nine to zero. Listen Ward two.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located north of Northeast 12th Street and west of Flicker Ridge Road. The property is currently zoned R1 as a planned unit development. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a single-family neighborhood consisting of 13 lots on 2.6 acres. This is in density of approximately five dwelling units per acre or six units per dwelling acre if you do not count in the common area. The final plat includes the previously approved reduced minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet versus 6,000 square feet as required by code. And it also includes a 20-foot front building line versus a 25-foot front building line that's required by code in the cul-de-sac only. Water and sewer are available to serve this site. On-site stormwater detention for this development is required. There is no FEMA flood plains or floodways located on the site. Access is provided by Flicker Ridge Road. Of the total 13 lots, two of them will have direct access to Flicker Ridge Road with the remaining lots being accessed through a new cul-de-sac street. The envisioned Moore 2040 plan calls for this location to be community commercial. Land use is allowed in community commercial can include a mix of uses with up to 50% residential development. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan. And this final plat application does seek to place single-family homes at a slightly increased density than the surrounding neighborhood while providing quality open space and aesthetic controls to offset those densities. This application does meet the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And this plat also meets the requirements set out by city code and the approved PUD. And staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? None? Thank you for adding.
You're welcome. And just so you know, we actually have added that stat to the first page of every statute.
Thank you.
So it'll be easy for you to access.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Can you call the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Our next item is seven. It's consider rezoning application number RZ1033 located in the southwest quarter of Section 14, Township 10 North, Rule 3 West, being north of Southwest 4th Street and west of Classen Avenue from R2 Family Dwelling District to C1 PUD Office District Planned Unit Development and approve ordinance number 1823. Application by Michael Grant. The planning commission recommended five to four on this item.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is located north of Southwest 4th Street and east of Classen Avenue in the electric addition. The property is currently zoned R2 and has an existing residential house of approximately 1,400 square feet with an attached two-car garage and this all sits on .39 acres. The applicant is proposing to convert the property to a C1 Office District Business Office in the existing building. To achieve the desired development, the property must be rezoned to C1 Office District as a planned unit development. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site and the site is not located in a floodplain or and no FEMA submittals be required. The proposed development includes one access point from South Classen Avenue for a small parking lot to serve the building. The existing driveway to Classen Avenue does pose a safety and congestion risk because it is of its close proximity to 4th Street intersection. And this application includes the removal of the driveway and the closure of the existing curb cut. The applicant is utilizing a planned unit development or a PUD to maintain the residential nature of the electric addition neighborhood. The by utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. The PUD proposal includes the following amenities. The maximum building height permitted is limited to one story with no elements of the structure exceeding 20 feet in height. Maximum building size is limited at 2,000 square feet. The maximum number of buildings are limited to those that are existing on the lot. Six additional evergreen trees shall be provided in addition to the existing trees on the lot. These six evergreen trees will act as a buffer to the residential properties to the north. A 36 green belt buffer is provided between the parking lot and the north property line with the adjoining residential neighbor. And signage is limited to a 50-foot, square foot monument sign. No pole signs will be allowed on this location. The envisioned Moore 2040 plan calls for this location to be neighborhood preservation. Land use is allowed in this district include light commercial while remaining residential in nature. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. The neighborhood preservation land use category was designed to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood. The land use does discourage commercial encroachment into the neighborhood by establishing requirements for new commercial businesses. Those requirements are located in the edges of the neighborhood, buffering to protect the integrity of abutting residential uses, buildings that mimic the residential structures, minimal traffic noise and odor impacts, and a typical eight to five business hours. The proposal meets all of these targets, of these requirements to be considered compatible with this land use category. Therefore, the application meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. City leaders have recognized the value of the electric addition and they do this by enshrining the residential use of the neighborhood into the comprehensive plan. No rezoning action should be undertaken in this area without first evaluating the potential impacts on the health and vitality of that neighborhood. For this application, the property is located on the southern edge of the electric addition. It's adjacent to Southwest 4th Street, which is a highly traveled, largely commercialized arterial roadway and Classen Avenue, which is a collector's street. Under the proposed PUD, the site will utilize the existing residential structure and only uses falling within the administrative and professional office use unit classification would be allowed. Furthermore, the PUD does increase the, does include landscape buffering and signage limitations to maintain the integrity of the residential area. There is a site plan located on your agenda. It's on page 200 if you'd like to look at the site plan. If city council agrees that the limitations outlined in the PUD provides sufficient protections for the electric addition, staff recommends approval of this application. At the planning commission meeting, there were two residents who spoke in opposition to this rezoning application. They both cited the potential for commercial encroachment into the neighborhood. Planning commission passed this item narrowly by four with the contingency that no LED signage should be allowed. The applicant would like to have an LED monument sign. So if the council deems it appropriate to approve this application, I would ask the council address the LED sign if it chooses to so approve. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody in the council have any questions? I know there are a few people that signed up to talk about it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Are they planning to modify the house?
Yes. My understanding is that the modification would be limited to constructing a new entrance on the north side. So it would look more like a business entrance to signify where people should enter. And then also they would be enclosing the garage and making that office space.
Okay. But not the basic structure of the house?
No.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will call up Lindsay Beeson. And if you'll just come up here and state your name and your address for our record. And we'll be glad to listen.
My name is Lindsay Beeson. I live.
You have five-minute time, woman.
My, my name is Lindsay Beeson. I live at 507 Southwest 3rd Street. So fairly close to where they plan to rezone this area. Some of the reasons that I wanted to speak out against it is that it just seems like we completely, all the time, have more encroachment of commercialization into this neighborhood. We currently got OnQ. You can, it's so bright, you can almost land a plane there. I'm concerned about, you know, if we have one side of the top of that neighborhood that currently is commercialized and then we're doing it on the other side as well, you know, how, how much more is going to be tolerated? Like whatever is tolerated tends to increase. I'm concerned about, you know, at some point, them commercializing the front part of the neighborhood. I'm concerned about property value decreasing. Right now, y'all guys might not know this, but a lot of the people that live on the north side, or I'm sorry, the south side of 3rd Street are homeowners right now. And I'm concerned if those property values decrease, should they choose to leave? You know, go somewhere else or, you know, would that become a renters' neighborhood at some point? Right now, also where that is located, I heard that they wanted to put a, you know, a parking lot on the south side of that house. Anyone that's turned into the electric subdivision off of 4th Street knows that that road, that intersection where people are coming out of OnQ, that road along going into the electric subdivision is already a very dangerous intersection. Sometimes you wonder if people's gonna stop even before they turn. I also speak for my mother who's here and I speak for another neighbor, Scott Pierce. They're very concerned about the increase in traffic on Classen. My mom, she currently lives at 505 Southwest 2nd, one street over from me and she saw firsthand how, you know, traffic has increased along that road from OnQ. You know, I hear that, that y'all guys want to keep the residential type of, you want to try to keep it residential, this, this new business, but I'm concerned that, that that's not going to happen. I feel like once you go commercial, you never, it's never residential again. You, you don't get to go back. I just feel like a law office there, any kind of commercial property is really gonna go up against the character of the neighborhood. There are a lot of people that really care about their home in that neighborhood, who are homeowners. And, you know, I'm just concerned about, you know, where, where does it end? Where do we stop commercializing the outside of the neighborhood? And at what point do people start to move out who are homeowners there? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Elizabeth, so, and I'm sorry, so the drive is gonna be on the north side of the property?
That's correct. Yes.
Do we know how far, I'm trying to look and I'm not good at reading these. Do we know how far north of that intersection that the entrance is gonna be? Trying to see on the, on the plans and I just.
So am I wrong in saying that the parking lot will be in the current backyard of the house?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
About 100 feet, looks like. About 100 feet. It'll move it from where it's at now?
Look, there's a house literally on Google Maps on the other side driveway to where that would be.
So, but it'll be far enough, you'd have to turn right to get in. It wouldn't be just at the stop sign and then right there is what it looks like to me. You'd have to turn right onto, or north onto Classen to go down, I.
Yes.
I think, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it would definitely be north of the existing driveway on the house. That driveway would be removed.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have backing out onto Classen. It would be a drive, a parking lot where you would obviously do your turning movements in the parking lot. And so, I mean, that would be safer than the driveway is today.
Perfect. Thank you.
And help me, Elizabeth, on the north side, is there the site proof? Is it shrubbery or is there any fencing, stockade fence?
My recollection is that there is a stockade fence there, but it is difficult to see that.
The plan says it'll be a six-foot stockade.
Yes, there would be a six-foot stockade fence no matter what. That, that area does have some trees that have been there for many years, so it is vegetated already. So there would be additional trees that would be planted if approved and then the setback between the parking, the edge of the parking lot and the fence would be 36 feet.
Is there anything to the west? Because there would be a backyard to the west of the parking lot.
To the west is another residential home. And so that setback, oh my goodness, it's listed here, but it's so small that I can barely read it. But it's well over 15, 20 feet.
Okay.
26.
Would it be, with this, if this were to become a commercial business, the trash pickup, would it be a polycard or is it gonna be a dumpster?
Yeah, so typically for these types of administrative office businesses, they typically use the polycarts. So that would be something that could be brought in and out, you know, on the pickup day.
Okay.
I'm kind of struggling to see if they put an LED sign here, how that would not shine into someone's personal home. I mean, is there, am I missing something here? Because looking at it. Bet you've got this house that's at 412 South Classen and then even at 505, if it's an LED, it could shine light into that house.
Yes, the applicant is here. I might have him speak to the sign location and how LED proposal would work, people speak.
Yeah. Yeah, let me just go through these and then we'll let the applicant speak in just a moment. So Joe Couch, are you here?
Yep.
We'll let the applicant speak in just a minute.
That's what this shows.
Yeah, the monument sign is up here by the intersection.
This is north.
Okay.
And just, again, state your name and your address and you'll have five minutes.
Joe Couch, 506 Southwest 3rd.
Thank you.
And the lady before me pretty well stated everything I wanted to say, but OnQ lights up our neighborhood already like a Christmas tree. And the traffic is like taking your life in your hands, turning off 4th Street onto Classen already. So with traffic coming in there and then OnQ turning to the right and this place turning into the left. And our street is like a thoroughfare in there since OnQ's been there. Traffic just cuts through our street already. So basically, she said what I wanted to say, but that's just a few of the things that.
Okay.
I'm just against the commercialization of, of our neighborhood, really.
And is your house, your yard, your backyard back up to the?
My yard is one yard to the west of where this.
Okay.
My, my yard backs up to the house on the west side.
Your corner post would match this lot, then.
Pardon me?
Your back corner post and this lot would.
Yes.
Touch each other.
Yeah. What was your lot number again?
506.
506, okay.
Next door and back, behind.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else to add?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And so one of your biggest concerns is the lighting from the sign coming in?
No, my biggest concern is traffic.
Traffic. Yeah. Partial, okay.
Plus the traffic, plus the lighting.
Thank you.
And then I have one person, Mona, but doesn't necessarily want to speak, but just wanted to list their opposition.
Okay.
Did you want to speak?
Well, there's one that's.
Okay, come on up.
That's not Mona.
Okay. And just state your name and your, the address.
My name is Bernice Mead and I live at 512 Southwest 3rd Street. As if any, I've lived there for 50 years. If anybody knows this, the 4th Street and Classen and the traffic that comes in from the side, from OnQ is a dangerous intersection. They haven't, I mean, they really need to know that, that 4th Street and, and Classen is probably the most accident-prone intersection we have in Moore. Then the traffic that's coming off of the little side street from the, on Q, turning. I have almost had, somebody hit me almost every time I come back from the post office. And it's, it's a dangerous intersection. And to put more traffic in there, it, it doesn't make any sense to me because first of all, we are a quiet neighborhood. The, the traffic that's on 4th Street sometimes is, well, first of all, the trucks want to get on, off the highway. So they come and they turn down 4th, they turn down 3rd Street. So we have that traffic. And to have more traffic backing up into the, into Classen going south on, yeah, going across the highway is making it more dangerous. And because when they're backing up, because these people are coming this way and they're backing into the traffic and that's nuts, that just speaks to me, accident. I, I just think that it's a really bad idea to make it a commercial area. We already have half of that block on 4th Street that's already commercial and we get all the blowback from there too. So I think one more place is just going to overburden us and I don't think it's right, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before the property owner, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, if the property owner is here, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chase Grant. My address is 1424 Northeast 1st Street. First and foremost, I just want to say. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you, actually, to all the, the neighbors that came here to speak out. This property means a lot to me and my family. My grandparents purchased it in nineteen eighty-seven. I grew up in the backyards, getting my first deer there, um, played in the front yard, had garage sales. I lived there for a year of law school. My sister lives there currently. And I, I hear a lot of the concerns that you have because I backed out onto that street. I've lived there. There's nineteen thousand cars, according to the Moore traffic study, that go through that intersection. So we constantly deal with lights and noise and people that drive right through the, uh, the end of that intersection there. There's a bumper that has been there since July twenty-ninth in the front yard, just outside the property line, but a car drove right through, wrecked, left, and the bumper's been there ever since. So I do understand the concerns of increased traffic because I've experienced it. My family has. It's been in my family for that en- entire length of time. So, when Onq came in, my grandma was living there. And she got exposed to constant noise, light, trash, and it wasn't supposed to be that way. My understanding is that when Onq went in, uh, they discovered that they needed to put in a retention pond. So the house across the street from my grandma got removed, where the pond currently sits. That was her only protection against the light, the noise, the traffic that Onq generates. So, I, I fully understand the concerns of increased commercialization. And if there's anything I can do to answer questions, that that is not our goal. Our goal is to take that property, give it a, a complete renovation, a makeover, to make it look nice and professional and clean, well taken care of. Uh, my goal is to put a fence in the backyard with whatever lighting provides the, the least impediment to my, my neighbors' daily lives. That's our goal. And again, my goal is not to turn it into a commercial so that I can later flip it into something else that has a, a high traffic rate. I'm an estate planning attorney and a financial advisor. In my free time, I coach youth hockey. I don't plan on changing tracks and opening up a dispensary and coming back to this council and asking you to rezone it to something else. I want to put down roots there. I want to be there for my career. It's a great spot. It's been in my family. So, as far as some of the other concerns that we've had to deal with, um, the, the LED sign, I, I don't, I believe there is an angle that we can put it on that would prevent any light from going back towards any residences. There's also that pole sign right across the street from Onq, right next to that retention pond. So, um, I don't think what we have in mind would be more of a, a light pollution on the neighborhood than what is currently already there. And if there was anything I could do in addition to help segregate the, the commercialization from the neighborhood, then I, I would be happy to do it, including, you know, whether that's installing a monument sign that says, "Welcome to the Electric Edition," right there next to that retention pond. But the, the biggest thing I want to get across is that we're not here to make waves. We're not here to upset the community. I'm going to be here. I'll stand at the podium. I'll answer questions. I, I'm here for the right reasons.
How many clients would you say you see in a day? Like, as far as traffic?
I, I don't have daily appointments. I, I meant to keep a log this last week, but, uh, like I said, I practice estate planning in probate, so most of my time is coordinating information with clients over the phone. They come in for an initial appointment. They come in for a signing appointment, and then I usually don't see them again.
Pretty limited, then?
Very limited.
And this will be your law office?
Yes.
And your grandmother's former home, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only six parking spots.
That's what I was noticing, yeah.
With regard to the, the fencing, I know it's across the north property line. Would that also come down the west property line as well?
Yes. Be happy to fence off the entire parking area, again, to avoid any disruption to our neighbors. As far as they know, we could have a backyard with a trampoline next door. That's the goal.
What are your hours of operation?
Currently nine to four.
The person at five oh five didn't show today? Or, that was, that was... Oh, okay. Five oh five is right next door to the west, that's what I was asking. And you are planting some evergreens right there as a barricade, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm seeing this all right. And what angle were you think, there's nothing more annoying to me. I have a neighbor behind me that has a security light that goes off every time the wind blows and moves a tree, all right? Shines right in my master bedroom. That would drive me nuts if there were, I mean, so, so how are you wanting to position the sign so that it's not gonna shine in someone else's house?
So, looking out towards the southeast would be my, my angle towards that T-intersection that comes off the highway right there. There's the, the T-intersection. We've got a giant tree that's positioned probably good thirty feet back from there. Um, it would be angled out towards that intersection across towards where the post office currently is.
South and east.
And...
Southeast.
Elizabeth, so C-one, um, if we rezoned, if it were to be rezoned C-one, it's very limited on what kind of commercial property can go in there, correct? Like, it couldn't be fast food or anything?
That's correct, but even in addition to that, he's using the planned unit development.
Okay.
So that means that literally nothing else could go in there that doesn't meet this design statement, which we've reviewed. So that means that there would never be any additional, um, uh, expansion of the house beyond the two thousand square feet. There would never be an additional story added on. They could never tear it down and rebuild it. It would have to come in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council for any of those types of changes. So, you know, whether or not, um, it's a lawyer's office, it might turn into a photographer's office. That still falls under administrative and professional office, but the, you know, the, the characteristics of the property would not be changed. It could not be unless it comes back before you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, counsel?
I would just like to say if we pass it, it's, the, you know, it's your grandmother's former home and you're wanting to make your law office out of it, and it's, so it's hard to be resistant to that with, I don't know that this would increase traffic more than one car a day for that area. But, you know, there would be an accountability piece that you follow through with this landscaping to create the barrier. And if they die or something, the expectation's gonna be that you replace it appropriately to keep that barrier between the house at five oh five and, and behind you. But it looks like they've got quite a bit of trees already existing there. So I'd just like to make sure you, you keep that in mind. If, if they die or something happens, they need to be replaced to keep that barrier there.
Happy to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I would, I would just have a, just one additional comment, that, you know, that is one of our, the Electric Edition is one of our more historic neighborhoods. And I think it's important that we do all we can to, um, preserve and to protect, uh, what Moore originally was. As it, it has grown and changed and it will continue to do so. And I, I just think it's important to hold on to our, our beginnings. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, real quick...
Elizabeth, I have a que- I have a question on the size of the sign.
Fifty square feet.
Do you know what size this sign will be?
Fifty square feet.
Fifty? It's limited to fifty square feet for a monument sign. At the Planning Commission, um, the applicant did say that he would be putting up some wall signage um, on the east side, um, and that would just fall within our city code.
Man, I'm curious. I almost want to ask if, if there's anything they can do to...
Mark, thank you.
Yes.
Somebody want to speak?
Yes, you can come back up.
Yeah, just come back up here.
Just really quick, one more thing, just kind of in response to what was said. Like I said, whatever, I'm a firm believer that whatever is tolerated will increase. Just from the planning meeting until now, we've gone from no LED sign to potentially an LED sign, just already. And then, second of all, I just don't, I don't really feel like it's right that the will of one person overrides what so many other people want. As far as the applicant, yes, he seems like a great person. It's just that, you know, we've, we've already made that switch. And I don't see why he can't get a law office someplace else. Like, why it has to be, you know, in, in our subdivision. And he does have something to financially gain because we all know commercialized property tends to sell more for more money than residential. So in that respect, if this proves, he's already increased the value of his property. You know, and again, it's one person's will versus a lot of others. So, please just take that into consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that going to affect our, uh, our tax, our...
Yep, no.
Shouldn't affect it at all.
I wouldn't think so.
The value of the home goes up, yeah.
Okay, any, anybody else? We need to move along. Okay?
I have hesitation with the LED sign.
That's what I said. Can we, can we prove it without?
Yeah, I, my, my thoughts on this is, it's hard for me to say. I, the traffic concern, I feel like is valid in general there. I take this intersection a lot. It is dangerous. But I don't feel that he's gonna incur a bunch of traffic, um, with this space. I would be, I would, I would really like the city to follow up and make sure this landscaping is there for the next few years, um, specifically on this property. But the, the LED sign still concerns me a little bit.
Brooks, is there anything that can be done to address the traffic issues on those streets coming up? Because I know that for a fact, um, I've seen it, people coming out of Onq. I don't know...
Regardless of what happens to this property.
Right, yeah, we've, I mean, something...
Yeah, we, we can certainly do a traffic study and look for ways to improve that area, as far as the traffic flow.
Let's, let's do some sort of a traffic study over there because I know they're right on that. Cars will come out of the Onq and just fly through there, so...
Yeah, and Brooks, when Onq put in that retention pond, looking at it online, there was never a fence or anything installed to separate the Onq parking lot from the... I mean, is that not something we can talk to Onq about, or...
Maybe, but...
Sure, we can have the discussion.
Yeah, cause that seems, I mean, I hear their concerns. I mean, I, I, if I lived there, the commercial property would concern me. But it does seem like a, a fit for the space as long as, you know, we stick with the PUD. That doesn't mean they can come in afterwards and change this and put in something more aggressive. Um, and the landscaping, it's gonna appear to be pretty much just still a house and, uh, very minor traffic. But I, any illumination or anything like that would be a, a concern, I think. Do you guys have any thoughts?
Can Public Works still pick up the bumper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until we go pick up that bumper.
Take care of that.
Would, uh, the property owner, uh, so with regard to the LED sign, do you guys also have drawings or, or have you looked at just doing a, a monument sign without the LED sign in there?
Uh, we have not looked at any drawings or models for what we're looking for. And I, I said at the planning meeting, and I, I meant it, I'm not married to that sign. If that is the flip of the coin between getting this to be in my future office for the foreseeable future, then I, I don't want to, that to be an impediment to that, so. But no, we have not looked at any, any plans yet.
And Elizabeth, to confirm, the Planning Commission approved it with the idea that there would be no LED sign, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
These are always hard, hard calls to make, but just looking at it for a home, you know, modified into an office for an attorney and it's his grandmother's house, it doesn't seem overly egregious as long as the landscaping occurs and the traffic patterns are true to what he's saying. You know, I, I don't, I'm not a fan of the sign, the LED sign anymore lighting in the area either. Do you guys have any additional thoughts? I'm hesitant to motion anything, too. Are we wanting to think on it, or what are you guys wanting to do?
I'll make a motion to approve the application without the LED sign.
Second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Uh, yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
No. Okay, item carries. We'll take it, item eight. Thank you for those who came to speak. Consider a release of an easement and acceptance of a new variable with waterline easement from Varequieu Moore Partners LP for an existing twelve-inch waterline located at eleven hundred North Moore Avenue.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, Starbucks is constructing a new facility at eleven hundred North Moore Avenue. Uh, when we were completing their site plan review, um, we did discover that there were several waterline easements granted at different times over a period of many years. And oddly enough, none of them actually covered the entirety of the waterline. So, in order to come back and, and clean up that, um, situation, Vicaro Properties is proposing to, um, release all of the existing waterline easements on the property because there were several that were approved. And grant one new easement that covers the entirety of the waterline. On page two twelve is a drawing of what that actually looks like. And the hatched area is what would be the area of the new easement. And the dashed lines are the, um, lines of the old waterline easements that would be, uh, released. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second, and you can call the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item nine is consider approval of a lot split located at eight twenty-five North towards twenty-fourth Street. Application by Moore to Come LLC, Sean Patton.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this lot split application is, uh, to split off one lot from a larger commercial, commercially zone development. The one lot that would be split off, uh, covers a commercial, existing commercial structure at the hard corner of, uh, northwest twenty-fourth Street and Janeway Avenue. Water and sewer is available to serve the site. The remaining property also has water and sewer available, uh, when, um, at such time development becomes, uh, feasible for this prop- property. Uh, the lot split does meet all C-three requirements and staff recommends approval of this application.
So, does this lot go all the way to twenty-seventh?
Um, it does not. No, it backs up to, um, I believe, uh, there is a boat storage to the north and maybe a, a bit of, um, the, many storage facilities.
Tire shop north of this also?
Um, that's further north.
Further north.
Further on north, yes.
Okay, I remember the boat shop, so, okay. All right, motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Would bring us to item ten, consider authorizing staff to solicit bids for new fitness equipment for the station, parks and rec.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, the Parks and Recreation Department are working on the preparation for the station expansion. The new equipment will be purchased for the planned fitness space. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second, no other discussion. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item eleven is consider approval of a parking lot expansion at Little River Park Splash Pad to be constructed by Silver Star Construction under the FY twenty-three, twenty-four Public Works Maintenance Contract in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, the Little River South location with a large splash pad and playground brings hundreds of visitors a day during the summer.
The present parking is not large enough to handle the volume of cars, especially on the weekends, which causes an overflow on the streets. And they park on both sides of the streets, so it leaves one lane between the two. Uh, this parking lot to the south will relieve this parking issue. Recommend approval.
I've noticed that problem myself. Motion to approve, or?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Along those, along those lines of the splash pad being so, um, utilized, um, I've had some calls recently, um, from folks in, over by Buck Thomas, that, could there be a consideration for another splash pad because the, the one at Little River is so full, and they feel like it's almost dangerous for their kids because it's so full? And so just some, just putting that word out there to, for something for consideration in the future.
We've had discussion with the city manager about another location to help alleviate that problem.
I mean, it's great, it's a great problem to have, right, yes.
It's a great problem to have, but, uh, we've got people from Oklahoma City, all the small towns around, they absolutely love that.
Right, right.
We love it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That, item carries. Would bring us to item 12. Consider a one-year renewal of a contract with New Tech with the Miranda Family Lights in the amount of $22,400 for the design and implementation of seasonal Christmas light show at the station in Central Park.
Vice Mayor and Council, this contract covers the digital display and show placed on the front of the station. It will be similar to last year. It will just have new songs and new displays.
We didn't have it last year, did we?
We did.
Yeah, we did.
We did, it was.
Not, it's the one, uh, that's up on the front of the.
Oh, this, okay, I was thinking of fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion and a second.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Item 13, consider authorizing use of the, of, of the remaining 2021 GO bond residential street improvement funds for construction of Lockoma Lane and extension off Hill Crest Drive Ward Two project, and construction of Southeast 38th Street and Timber Valley Drive, and extension off Timber Creek Way and Southeast 38th Street Ward One projects utilizing Silver Star Construction under the current FY 23-24 Public Works Maintenance Contract.
Vice Mayor and Council, the, uh, there were seven residential street projects in the, uh, overall 2021, uh, GO bond, and all of those have been completed at this time, and we do have some additional funds, and we talked to the bond council about if we could utilize them, you know, in the, in the proximity or an extension of existing projects, and they said that that was no problem. And so we re, we would recommend that we do Lockoma, uh, which is a gravel road right now, uh, approximately 225 feet, uh, to the east of Hill Crest, coming off the Hill Crest Project in Ward Two. And then the other project that we would like to, uh, basically complete, the, uh, Timber Creek Way, uh, 30, 38th Street to 41st Street project and, and complete the loop, uh, for that ne, neighborhood. And, uh, uh, we have approximately, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. We haven't, we haven't completed the, the total, uh, uh, compilation of what the funds are, but we feel very comfortable that we can finish these two projects, and then we may be back asking for a, a third project in, in the future.
Hey, thank you for, uh, for working that out. To come in a million dollars under budget, especially going, getting bond approval and then working, that's pretty impressive to be able to add two, maybe three more projects to the.
Yeah, we, we received very, very good low, uh, prices in our original bids for those three projects.
And I, I, when I got, uh, first ran for council and got elected in 2012, Hill Crest was one of the, uh, streets as well as the Lockoma, so I'm glad to see that Hill Crest is done and that we're gonna be able, more likely to be able to do Lockoma. That'll, that'll be good.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Will bring us to item 14, consider approving a right-of-way acquisition agreement in the amount of $26,400 with Pinnacle Consulting Group, Inc., for the North Fork Little River Erosion Control Project located at Bryant Avenue and Southeast 4th Street.
As you're aware, we are, uh, working on a project, trying to finalize the, the, the final plans. Um, in, in order to construct and make the improvements to the channel, uh, just on the, on the, uh, east side of Bryant and north of 4th Street, uh, we're gonna have to adjust the road to, a little bit to the, to the west. Um, and so, uh, in order to do that, we're gonna have to obtain some permanent and temporary, um, right-of-way and construction easement, uh, so that we can do that. Uh, the roads, uh, there's only four lots that we're gonna be, uh, asking to acquire, uh, some temporary construction easement and permanent right-of-way. Uh, the road between Parkway Drive and Southeast Fourth, uh, will still tie in to the existing location as it does on 4th Street and on Parkway Drive, but in between, we're kinda shifting it a li, a little bow, if you will, to the west so that we can construct that channel and provide some, uh, protection for the roadway. And we recommend that, uh, we hire a Pinnacle Group to be able to, uh, help us with obtaining the, uh, the easements for that construction.
Will that affect that walking path through there that connects to veterans?
No, no, this is on the north side of, yeah, of 4th Street.
Well, yeah, this is, this is on the north side that goes down Bryant. When I'm looking between Parkway and, and 4th.
In fact, in fact, what we, what we plan on doing is constructing a, making it a 10-foot wide, uh, pedestrian trail that can be bicycled.
See a lot of people run on the dirt down that street between Bryant and 12th, so I hope we don't get rid of what sidewalk we have.
Yeah, this will be on the west side.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item 15 is consider approval of FY 22-23 budget supplement to the Special Revenue Fund, Fund Eight, to budget donations and grant funds to the Half-Cent Dedicated Sales Tax Fund, Fund 12, to budget additional sales tax collections and, uh, and to the General Obligation Bonds Fund, Fund Four, to budget additional funds for bond encumbrances.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budget amendment, excuse me, to increase the budget for last year for additional funds that were collected during the course of the year, some from grants from other sources and the additional sales tax. So a lot of those monies have been obligated and encumbered, and we're just wanting to make it right with the budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we're gonna recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item 16 is the consent docket. We'll receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held July 17th, 2023, and item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $2,61,873.71, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $205,170.69.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item 17 is our consent docket. Accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held July 17th, 2023. Approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement agreement with Gregory Lucas in the amount of $2,000 and reinstate 230 hours of sick leave in exchange for dismissal with prejudice in CBR number And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $195,268.95.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. We'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item 18 is new business, Citizens Forum. Items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak about anything? Item B is citizen, or information, items from the city council and trustees.
Um, how is Eastern Avenue coming along? It just seems as though it's not moving at all, and I've, I, I went into my vet's office the other day and they came running over and said, what, what's happening? Nothing, nothing's happening, and so I'm just curious as to.
Yeah, they're, right now, what they're doing is they've, they've, uh, on the west side of Eastern at 19th, they're working on the south end.
Okay.
And, uh, they've, uh, completed their stabilization. Uh, they've got their grid and they've put down their base material, which is a aggregate of, of aggregate rock and, uh, low-grade concrete. And, um, then they're doing the same thing on the west side of the intersection.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the east side of the intersection, uh, the south side.
They're at like 19th, okay, yep.
Yeah, and they're, and they're, uh, they wanna get the stabilization and their rock and concrete aggregate, uh, mixed it, uh, down so that they can come in and do the concrete, uh, at one time.
Okay.
Um, I talked to them this afternoon, and they still said that they're still, uh,
On schedule?
Still on schedule to complete the south portion of the project, 19th and Eastern Intersection by the end of August.
Okay.
Unless something drastic happens.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I, I've also gotten some calls and
Yeah.
about that, too, so.
Yeah, it's, it, it's a, you know, it's a very small area they're trying to work in, and, uh, a lot of them are already there. Back today, they didn't have any, uh, shows.
Okay.
Well, that's not good.
I'm sure city manager's gonna touch on this, but National Night Out appeared to be a huge success. It was a great event, great turnout. Thank you to everybody involved. Officer Dickinson back there, thank you very much, uh, for all you did, even though you wouldn't let me take the segue around, but still, you did, it was, it was an incredible night, and, I mean, there were a lot of, uh, very happy residents out there, so thank you.
It is, and, and it was 100-plus degrees, but it was still.
It was incre, I don't know what the count was, but it, it was, it was, it was six?
About six grand.
Six thousand, yeah, great job. I mean, it was, it was, it was incredible, so thank you.
It really is.
Everyone involved in that, so thank you.
I agree. Brooks, do you have anything? Yeah, I'll just offer congratulations also to everyone who was involved in National Night Out. Great success. Uh, I had to park further away than I've ever parked before, and so that's, uh, uh, you know, a statement of, of how popular it is, and especially, uh, you know, we have these things in August, and it's always hot, but it never seems to deter the crowd, so congratulations. Okay, thank you, everybody. Item 19 is executive session. Section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma State Statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, discuss and consider previously submitted applications, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking po, possible action to select an applicant, if any, for the fi, filling the vacant Ward One seat on the city council as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B1. Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, will be in executive session.
Mark Ham.
Yes, will be in executive session.[252.73]
I missed the last meeting, so I had to be caught up on why this was happening.
Okay, okay.
Just keep busy.
Okay, we are back from executive session. Just let the record show that everybody that was present is still present. And with that, what action do we want to take?
I would just like to make a motion. We select Kathy Griffith to fill the vacancy Ward one spot.
Second. We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. And item 20 will be adjournment.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. We adjourned. Thanks, everybody.